One.
Great. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Vulnerable People and People in Crisis Public Hearing. Tonight, we're hoping to hear from you, the public, on the draft version of our final report, our recommendations going forward, and just hearing your thoughts about it, your feedback. If you have any questions for us, we'd love to hear them. Tonight is supposed to be more of a listening session for us. We're going to try to sit back as much as possible and just give the public space for your comments. Your comments are very valuable and we really need to hear them and appreciate them. So, thank you for being here tonight. We're going to start with a very brief overview of our report, just to catch people a little bit up to speed who may not have read the entire report yet. And I believe that Devin just put the link to the report in the chat. Right? Yep. So you can also take a look at that if you want, but we're just gonna go over the report very briefly and then just open it up for questions, comments, feedback. So Devin, if you want, or Almas, or whoever's the PowerPoint person, can you pull it up?
On the screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay.
So again, this is the task force to reimagine police safety in Brookline, the Vulnerable People and People in Crisis Subcommittee. Next slide. The mission or charge for our Subcommittee was basically to look at the needs of Brookline residents who are vulnerable or have a number of crises going on during their lives, to examine to what extent those needs are being met by the town, what services and supports are available to them. Our main focus has been on people with mental health issues, experiencing crises, people with substance use issues, and people who are currently unhoused. We took a look at the work that many other communities have been doing in this area, and we had a lot of discussions about how other communities have been dealing with this issue, how it might suit the needs of Brookline or not. Next slide. So, we wrote ourselves some questions to kind of focus on what we were doing as a Subcommittee, and they were, again, what are the community-based services and supports for vulnerable people in Brookline and also for people in crisis in Brookline? Are there any gaps in our system that we need to address, hopefully strengthen, community-based services and supports to serve the needs of these people? What crisis intervention services are currently in use? Our findings were, as you'll hear, the Brooklyn Police Department is often the first responders for people in crisis. And we were weighing out how community-based crisis intervention models might enhance what the PPD is already doing and/or potentially to replace this crisis intervention services that the BPD is doing now. Next slide. Again, we looked at models that exist nationally and also internationally for crisis intervention and also for community-based service models in terms of what made sense for Brookline. Next slide. So, for the last, I don't even remember, eight months, maybe, we've been meeting, we've done this literature search, we've done interviews with stakeholders in Brookline, including the Brooklyn Police Department, CIT, supervisors, overseers. The, we met with the Brookline Community Mental Health Center. I always get their name mixed up. We met with the Executive Director of the Brookline Center as well as the head of the Community Services and Supports Division for the Brookline Center. And we also interviewed Tim, is it Tim? It was called Tim Black, who is a person who works with Kahoots, which is an Oregon-based crisis intervention service. Tim is doing consultation with other towns and cities who are interested in reimagining their crisis intervention models, and we interviewed with him. Also, the task force did a community survey of Brookline residents. Twenty-five thousand residents received the survey. And one notable piece of data from the survey was how the question on community support models that currently exist in Brookline. And just to, it really hit home for us in terms of our own work on the Subcommittee. Eighty-three percent of the respondents preferred community crisis workers for mental health crises. Eighty-eight percent preferred community crisis workers for people without housing. And sixty-four percent preferred community crisis workers for neighbor or family disputes. And this was preferred over Brookline Police Department crisis workers. Next slide. So we came up with some recommendations. We go into much more detail in the report. Our recommendations in, recommendation A is to consult with Kahoots, the crisis intervention service model that's been developed in Eugene, Oregon. We believe that law enforcement officers, should be officers, should not be the primary responders for people in mental health and substance use crises, that individuals experiencing crises that are not criminal in nature, violent, do not want a police response, and sometimes are triggered or traumatized by having law enforcement officers provide those services. Next slide. The CIT model, which is what the Brooklyn Police Department uses, it stands for Community Intervention Team, trains the officers on mental illness signs, symptoms, communication skills, and de-escalation skills. But what we found in the evidence is there's little to no evidence that CIT training predicts any changes of the officers in the field when providing those services. It teaches them about what's happening in crises for people dealing with those types of issues, mental health, substance use, trauma on the street, and it teaches them some basic skills, but it doesn't actually change their behavior. That is what the evidence in the research is saying as of 2021. So for the Kahoots model, instead of police, a crisis support team is sent, tends to be a medic and a crisis worker to deal with the individual in crisis. They provide immediate stabilization, assessment of what's happening, referral to services, advocacy on their behalf if needed, transportation when needed. And the Kahoots team, the research shows that less than 1% of the calls received by Kahoots required police presence. So, very rarely did they need to call the police to help them in a situation on the street. Our second recommendation is, okay, it would be great to have new crisis intervention models happening in Brookline, but what we heard from all the stakeholders we interviewed is, that's not all we need. We also need services and supports to be expanded prior to having a crisis, pre-crisis services that will hopefully help to stop crises from happening. And they may include peer support specialists, case managers, mobile treatment teams, potentially a community drop-in center. Many of these folks tend to be isolated, and having some kind of social support might be helpful. And of course, housing and employment specialists. And then what's also needed is what happens after the crisis. Are there follow-up services in place? And what we were hearing from stakeholders is a need for more follow-up services, community support bridging, mobile crisis services going forward, same-day crisis therapy appointments, and other, and other types of services. Next slide. Another thing we heard, and something from our own experience, we, it took us a long time to find what services and supports are currently, currently exist in Brookline. And it took all of us kind of putting together a list of services and supports. It was not easy to do. So, we added that to the recommendation that we need to have some sort of website or that people know about, that they can access to get the services and supports they need. And we need the town to provide public education on what's available. Next slide, last slide. Finally, we believe that there is a need for a social service department to be created in Brookline by the town. It would be part of the town government. The social service department could implement and oversee all of the recommendations. It could partner with other departments. It could develop form relationships with other stakeholders who provide these services in Brookline. And it can enhance the community-based services and supports that serve everybody who lives in Brookline. We need some sort of umbrella department in Brookline that is responsible for overseeing and developing these services. And that's it. So, thank you for listening to me read through PowerPoints, PowerPoint slides, and now we will open it up to the public for questions and comments.
Great. Thank you, Anne. At this time, I want to make the attendees aware that you are able to use the Q and A or hand raise feature to indicate that you'd like to make a public comment. Then you'll be promoted to a panelist. You can share your video if you're comfortable, and your time will begin. At this time, we do have twenty-four attendees. Khorv Farma, you've been promoted to a panelist, and your time will begin when you're ready.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, I'm new to all of this. I'm just your typical, doesn't know anything, Brookline resident, and I want to get more involved in this. And I want to know, like, these all sound like great recommendations, like especially Kahoots, like at the fraction of the costs, you get more effective services. I don't know about you, but I can't remember the last time I had a therapist who carried a weapon with them at all times and was trained to kill people. So, I don't think that we should treat the homeless or poor the same way. But in terms of like the process for getting this passed, because it seems like eighty percent of people, sixty to eighty percent of people are for this. This is like widely popular. It would be a shame if this didn't pass. What, can you speak to any influences? Like, does the BPD have like a police union which lobbies our government? Like, why don't we already have this? That's my first question. And my second question is, like, this is a task force, but is the, is the town hall going to vote for this? And if so, when? Because I want to be there for that.
So I can, I can take a swing at answering that. So, the Brooklyn Police does have a union, I wish the Brooklyn Police Association, I think, is the term. In terms of why we don't already have this, I, I would describe that, this would be purely speculation. The way, just the way the history of policing has worked in this country. Not so much that, it's more that I think we start with police as the baseline assumption and move from there, rather than starting with nothing as the baseline assumption and choose from a set of options if we chose police. So, part of the job of our task force is to take a step back and say, okay, there are a lot of things that have been handed to the police through default or by the failure or falling down of other services. What jobs do we think the police should be properly doing? What jobs do we think might be better done by a different service? That's one of the things that our task force has been looking at. And that's, I, I, I think that's, that's how I would answer your first question. As to the second piece, for when this would be voted on, what we are doing as a task force is we're making recommendations to the, to the town select board. Right? So, we will ultimately be presenting things to the select board. I need to double-check my notes to make sure when we're going to be doing that. And I've, sorry?
March second. March second. Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, you both spoke at the same time. It's a little hard for me.
Could change, but that's the date we have.
Right. So that would be on a Tuesday night, which is their regular meeting time. So you could come and make a public comment at that time for what they, you know, what, what you want them to implement. But even if the task of the select board chooses not to implement some of these recommendations, you can still bring this up at town meeting, which occurs every spring and fall. And you have town meeting representatives who you can lobby on your own. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Do we know which town members are against this?
We're at, we're at the very beginning here, in terms of, this is, so what you're seeing now is the results of a several months' process, right? Where the subcommittees have been working individually and the task force as a whole has been working. The task force meets every Friday morning, and the subcommittees meet at various times throughout the week. And what you're seeing is the, a first time we're putting our full recommendations before the public to ask for feedback. We expect that, you know, maybe more past this point, we'll get a more conclusive view of how the various town meeting members feel about it. I'm not aware, I'm not personally aware of who's expressed what views where. And I think as a town meeting member, could maybe speak to that some more. But I think, to the extent to which we don't yet have answers, we should expect to see more answers now that our recommendations are starting to come out.
Great. And I'm a, I am a town meeting member for Precinct 11 in Brookline. It's not something that has been formally discussed by town meeting to this point. I imagine it will be in the future. I'm not sure what your precinct is, but you might want to reach out to your town meeting members in your precinct if you're interested in getting involved. And there are also some groups, if you want to send an email, I can try to help you connect with the people who are your town meeting members, if you're new to town.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The next person signed up for a public comment is Naomi Schweitzer. Naomi, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can share your video if you're comfortable, and your time will begin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. Naomi Schweitzer, town meeting member, Precinct 10. Thank you so much to the Subcommittee of the Reimagining Task Force for all of the time and effort that you've put into the report and your deliberations. And I'll just start by saying I agree with all of them, and I think we should do all of them. And I will talk about some more specifics, but I really think they are right on in the direction that we need to be going in. I'm speaking tonight in two capacities, both professionally and personally. Professionally, I have been working in homeless services for the last twenty-two years, and I have worked directly with people experiencing homelessness and have also worked on program management. And now I work with communities across the country as they are working to figure out how to best reduce and end homelessness in their communities and to do it in a way that is person-centered and involves the voices of people with a lived experience of homelessness and centers on equity and recognizes that we have racial and other inequities with the people who become homeless and how they're treated once they are homeless and the outcomes for them in terms of finding housing, access to health and employment. So I'm, I'm speaking tonight both professionally and I'm also speaking personally. Personally, I'm speaking as someone who has multiple family members with major mental health issues and family members experience substance use issues. And I know what it is to have interaction with the police or think about having interaction with the police related to that, and also with many different kinds of social service providers, and what it's like when that's available and when it's not available. So I come with those two perspectives tonight. And so when I say I endorse this plan, I have a lot of background and thoughts that I bring to it, and I'm happy to be available to assist as the committee and the town continues to develop this. So, some details. One is, I love the idea of the town creating a human services department. Earlier in my career, I worked in Cambridge, and I was a housing advocate for people experiencing homelessness. And I was hired by the city of Cambridge. And as you may know, they have a very robust human services department covering many things, from mental health services to preschool and childcare, and also housing-related services for people who are experiencing homelessness. And it's very clear in Cambridge, the value that they put in trying to do the pre-crisis services needed to keep that community whole and functioning. And that included the Cambridge Psychiatric Emergency Team, which is similar to the BEST team that is mentioned in the report. And I've had the opportunity to interface and work with both the Cambridge psychiatric team and the BEST team over the years, and they are critical lifesaving interventions when you have someone in crisis and you know that you can call them and not the police. At the Service Provider Agency that I worked in for many years, where we were working directly with people experiencing homelessness, including those living on the streets, sometimes people experiencing major mental health issues and also substance use disorders. Part of our training for staff was around de-escalation. And everything that we did in our training, including how we set up our office, how we moved our bodies, how we spoke to clients, was centered on being respectful and understanding that people were in crisis and trauma, and we needed to approach them that way so that we could try to help them center themselves, so we could see what their strengths were, and so that we could help get them on a path to housing. And we would bring some of the, you know, some of the bureaucratic expertise or knowledge that is this crazy Byzantine thing that we have around affordable housing to help them navigate that. But they had a lot of strengths that they were bringing to the table, but you can't access those if you're in the middle of crisis and trauma. And we specifically trained staff that we never call the police except for a very, very, very last resort. And the reason for that is, in most cases, it escalates the situation because you have someone in a uniform with a gun showing up. And many of our clients have had negative interactions with the police over the years, and we are putting them at danger of adding something to their criminal record, which will then make it harder for them to get housing. So, we do not want to call the police. We want to avoid that if at all possible, and we want to develop other models. I also second the recommendation of consulting with Kahoots based on my experience of working with BEST and the Cambridge Psych Emergency Team and watching other communities being creative in homeless services and doing similar things to Kahoots. I think that would be a great thing for Brookline to explore. So the other thing from a personal perspective that I just want to share is that when you are a family member and you have someone in your family that is having a crisis related to mental health or substance use, it's a very difficult place to be in. And when you get to the place where someone may be decompensating and, you know, acting in a way that's maybe not safe for themselves or other people, I can say for myself, I do not want someone in a uniform with all that power of the law behind them and a gun showing up as the first thing that I'm going to do. I want someone who understands the health situation that's going on and is trained in de-escalation and who can help support my family member and myself in that immediate crisis and to help us in the, the moments after it, and then what we need to do next. And to try to do it in the most person-centered, least stressful way possible. And so I don't end up with a family member who might get put in a dangerous physical position. Or I might be, because the police have that option at their disposal. And when you have that option at your disposal, you're more likely to use it, especially if you haven't really been trained in the core thing that's going on in that moment, which is essentially a medical emergency and needing to respond to it in that way. So again, thank you so much for all of your work. Really appreciate it. I think you're right on. I think we should do all of these things, and I'm available to help as hopefully some of these recommendations get implemented.
Next person signed up for a public comment is Joey Leader. Jody, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can share your video if you're comfortable, and your time will begin.
Thank you. I'm Jody Leader. I live and work in Brookline. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-six and worked here since two thousand and five. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist, and I resonate with all that Naomi Schweitzer just said, everything she said. And I just want to go on record as saying I agree with all of the recommendations of this Subcommittee and feel that they, all of the recommendations should be implemented. Thank you for an incredible job you've all done. That's all.
The next person signed up for a public comment is Amy Takinami. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your time will begin when you're ready.
Hi, y'all. Amy Takinami, she/her/hers, town meeting member in Precinct 10. Thank you all again for your hard work, energy, time, commitment to ensuring that Brookline can be a safer place for all of us. I, and it sounds like along with the majority of those surveys, strongly agree with your overall recommendation that police should not be the primary first responders for communities, members in mental health crises. Police presence under these circumstances is traumatic, proven to be unnecessary, and often escalates already really difficult situations for individuals or families and, you know, their entire communities. And I'm also speaking from personal experience with police interfering in my own family's mental health crises in the past. In terms of your recommendation regarding pre-crisis services that you listed, I agree, public safety shouldn't just be understood as solely reactive. And I would actually put your definition of pre-crisis, pre-crisis services a little wider to include things like high-quality equitable pre-K through sixteen public education, expanded public housing opportunities, Medicare for All, right? Essentially not just acute pre-crisis services, but universal basic rights that we know are at the root cause of quote-unquote crime prevention. And I think making this connection for the wider public is crucial in ensuring long-term public safety. And finally, I really love the idea of a social services department here in Brookline. And the only thing I want to caution against with this idea is that I wouldn't want it to see this department become a place that just coordinates direct services. I would love to see a department like this have the ability and power to make the connections between direct services and root causes in our community. So for example, the department would likely be able to keep track of how many folks in their community are in need of X direct service. And instead of just taking that data at face value, the department could then ask a larger question, right? Of why X number of people may be needing X direct service and coordinate solutions with other town and maybe state departments and agencies to address those underlying root causes. And of course, I just want to acknowledge that some of the things that I'm proposing here are out of the direct purview of our small town, which is, I know, embedded in a state and a country that has its own limitations. But I do also want to acknowledge the unprecedented moment we're in to make transformational change and lead on some of these charges. As we all know, we have an abundance of resources here in Brookline, and I hope the efforts coming out of the Reimagine Task Force become part of a Become part of a larger vision of a more just and equitable distribution of wealth and resources in our town. In our own community and beyond. Thank you.
The next person signed up for a public comment is Sam Tarlo. Sam, you've been promoted to a panelist. Can share your video if you're comfortable, unmute and your time will begin.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak and thank you to the subcommittee for all of your hard work on this. It's really great to read. Your findings and recommendations. I think when I encounter stuff. Like what you've written. I always want to interrogate a kind of reliance on highly trained individuals and technocracy. When dealing with crises. So when I see something like a. The cahoots model. I'm always wondering like, what would it look like if there were broader community teachings? For crisis response that didn't rely on like a team of two people. To zip around everywhere and perhaps they aren't from the community and well, they might be highly trained in XYZ, like actually don't understand the context. That they're entering into. And you know, I also am wary sometimes of. As I said, I don't know, kind of technocracy or focus on social workers or. People who are, you know, maybe have like. Kind of bad experiences with like the psychology model and don't really want to work with those professionals. I'm always kind of wondering about. How we can shift the frame to like not have to rely on. Any kind of credential professional and like give power back to. Like the people who know what their needs are and consult for themselves if only they had the resources. That had been extracted from them. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Jeffrey Benson. Jeffrey, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can share your video and your time will begin when you're ready.
Hey, good evening, folks. Thanks again for all the work you're doing on this. I want to speak from a specific perspective. My dad was a cop. And. He would speak about, you know, most cops don't spend a lot of their times going into bank robberies. And cops spend a lot of times going, going into domestic crisis situations. And he would say that those were the hardest ones, the hardest work to do. You're coming into like a movie in the middle, so to speak, and you come in. And you got the police uniform on and you've got your gun. And the history of racism can't be overlooked in here. Also being white officers going into communities of color. It's a tough, it's tough for cops. It's the scariest, hardest part for them as well. And we live in a. An armed, unfortunately for cops, we live in a country that's an armed community. And so they also go in in a heightened state of anxiety and fear because they don't know what risk they're going to be put in as well. And I often think we need to get them out of those situations. Because everyone's more at risk because of that. And I don't know how much training we can give police. That would let the people in the community know that they're okay with these particular police offices. And there's no way for anyone to say, oh, that's a well-trained person who understands the history of police and oppression and racism in the community. It's a tough, it's a tough place for cops to go. I've been wondering about if there's any data. That you've been able to get from the Brookline Police Department. About how often they are going into those situations. How often they've needed to. Use the force of the police. To be effective in that way. Or how often are we actually putting them in a situation? Where we're spending our money for police to do something that they shouldn't be doing. And do we have the data? How many domestic crisis situations have they been asked to go in in the last year? What have been all the outcomes from that? Well, how many situations was it necessary for them to use the force of their authority? And I think that would be real important because I think as trying to convince the community. Of where we put our resources. I think part of it is we, it's a money thing. We're spending money for police to do something that raises the situation for everyone, for the cops and for the people there. And it's just may be a really poor use of resources. So I would, I'm hoping that we can get some data from the police department about that. So thanks very much for your work and I'm done. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly respond to Jeffrey. We have been collecting some data that you'll find in our appendix in the report. About how many instances, how many times they've been called to. Deal with a particular type of crisis that was relevant to what we were looking at in the subcommittee. So you'll find some, we're still trying to collect more data on that, but there's some in the report. And in terms for Sam. I agree completely. I don't think that, I'm a licensed mental health counselor. But I'm also somebody who's very, very in favor of people. With lived experience. Being the very actively involved. Having more than just a seat at the table, but sometimes. Sitting at the front of the table and directing what's happening. In terms of crisis work and community support work. There's a lot of research out there that peer supporters, people with lived experience are. The best. They, they, because of their experience, they can really bond and form connections with folks that. Professionals can't always do in the same way. And I imagine that any kind of social service department that we create, any kind of systems. Supports, programs that we create to serve these needs would. I would love it if it was 51% people with lived experience showing the way, leading the way. So thank you.
At this time, there are 25 attendees and we'd like to encourage folks to use the hand raise or Q and A feature. To indicate that they'd like to make a public comment during this hearing. If you're not comfortable making a comment this evening and you'd like to think about it. You can always send written comment to dfields@brooklinema.gov. That comment can be shared. With this subcommittee as well as the larger task force to reimagine policing in Brookline. And it can be anonymous if that's your preference.
The other thing that we would like help with is. Finalizing the list of social services and programs that already exist that serve people in Brookline. Again, we've been trying to compile a list of those services and supports and we want to make sure we're not missing any. The Brookline. Community Mental Health Center folks just gave us this week. A list of services and supports in Brookline, but they weren't even sure they're up to date. So we could, we'd really appreciate any input on making sure that our list is accurate. And includes all the programs out there. Thank you.
At this time, there are 25 attendees and we'd like to encourage folks to use the Q and A. Or hand raised feature to indicate that they would like to make a comment.
It looks like Ryan Black wants to speak.
Ryan, you've been promoted to a panelist and your time will begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Devin. And thank you to the members of the subcommittee for your work and all the effort that went into these recommendations. I. I just want to, you know, I'll try to be brief, like cahoots definitely sounds like a really solid idea, you know, as does more pre crisis, pre crisis service and the idea of. Forming a social services department in Brookline, although I do want to echo the considerations that Amy brought up earlier. As well as the other thing I want to emphasize too is kind of. That more holistic approach to public safety she was getting at in terms of like thinking about essentially. The entirety of someone's needs and kind of like the real root causes of despair and desperation that. Might, you know, lead to crime and how we should really be thinking about addressing, addressing those root causes like. For example, I, I think I, I saw the other week, for example, how. I believe it was Austin, Texas, cut money from the police budget to, you know, just buy a hotel and essentially just give housing to homeless people. It's like. Or, excuse me, sorry, people who are experiencing homelessness and it's just like. That may sound like an oversimplification, but really like sometimes you just like. Like what better way to address homelessness and just give people housing? Like sometimes it really is that simple. It's just like, you gotta get the political will to like make those fiscal decisions. So yeah, I would just encourage the town's decision makers to think that big picture. Thank you. I'm good.
The next person signed up for public comment is Danelle O'Neil. Danelle, you've been promoted to a panelist and your time will begin when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. All I wanted to say was thank you. You guys do so much crucial work. And have accumulated so much data. That's going to be hard for folks in the town to not recognize what's going on. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all the hard work y'all have done thus far. And that's all I really want to say right now. Thank you.
At this time, there are 26 attendees. And we are encouraging folks to use the Q and A or hand raised feature to indicate if they'd like to make a comment. This could also be a good opportunity for subcommittee members to discuss. Any parts of the process that they found particularly interesting or surprising that could spark some discussion. Additionally, I do want to make all attendees aware that the larger. Public hearing for the task force to reimagine policing in Brookline will be held on Wednesday. February 17th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. That is publicly posted on the Town of Brookline calendar and folks can go ahead and register for that in advance. You'll get a reminder email when that hearing is coming up. And you'll be able to see the report in its entirety as opposed to these sections that were completed by the subcommittees.
Hi, it's me again. I thought Ryan brought up a great point about like, you know, why can't, if we're going to really address homelessness. Then why not shift money away from a department who's, who. I mean frankly, just kills people and then just shift it to housing homeless people. And one question I have on that point is as a Brookline resident. Is there any, can I, do I have access to information? How much do we spend on the police? How much do we spend on housing? And if you have that information, my question is, could you, could you tell me like, how much are we spending on the police? How much are we spending on housing?
There is a budget that comes out annually. In terms of what was spent in the prior year. On police and other town wide services. In Brookline. I don't have that information on my fingertips, but I could look it up. And I could share it with you if you wanted to. Send an email and also Devin is saying. You can go to. The Town of Brookline webpage. Slash eight five one slash budget hyphen central and you'll get a lot of information there as well.
Okay, I see it. I see it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, there are 26 attendees and we are encouraging folks to use the hand raise or Q and A feature. If they'd like to make any public comment. This public hearing will conclude at seven, so we have about 15 minutes left. Before the subcommittee members make any closing remarks and wrap up their presentation. But we would like to encourage as many folks here as possible to. Either give a comment now in live time or share that with us after the fact that can be sent via email. And redacted for anonymity. Folks can email dfields@brooklinema.gov.
Just to get people's thoughts moving, I'll offer a prompt. Would love to hear some more about what you think about cahoots in specific.
The next person signed up for public comment is Danelle O'Neil. Danelle, you've been promoted and your time will begin when you're ready.
All right. Good evening again, you guys. I guess my question is, do y'all have any questions from folks in the community? That would help. You all. That's, that's, that's the question I have too. What questions do you have for, for us?
One thing we haven't been able, one population we haven't been able to hear from as of yet. Through our subcommittee work are people who've had. Crises, who've had these experiences of crises in Brookline. And what those experiences were like in terms of the community based and. Brookline Police Department services and supports they received. We very much like to hear from folks who've had those experiences so that. We can. Learn from them because their, their thoughts and experiences and, and their needs matter. We very much want to hear from the community and we hope. To be working alongside the rest of the task force and the community engagement. Subcommittee task force team. subcommittee task force team to be, you know, actively reaching out to folks and and building a model together that suits that that fits everybody's needs. What we're concerned about right now is that some people are being left out. Um, and we want them to be included and perhaps lead the way. So thank you. Now, it's a good question.
No, no, thank you, Ann. So I I so I guess so like over here in the Village Way where I where I live, um I'm you know, I'm I'm sure a lot of residents here and I don't want to speak for everybody here um didn't receive a survey. Um, I I take kind of blame for that, I guess, in in a little bit of of a way. Um, I guess, how do I how how do we get the message out that we're having these meetings? And you know, this conversation this conversation is actually happening. Um, because you know, where where I live in Village Way, this complex has been around forty odd years or so. And you know, it's a mixed, it's a mixed bunch in here. Um, from doctors, uh you know, to custodians, you know, you know, uh students, the the whole nine. And I I'm curious on how folks in over here in this complex uh would would reply to your surveys, you know? Um, I know it's kind of late in the game for this, but I I'm curious on a way I can get folks over here at least, um because we can send an email to the management over here and have them circulate information out to the residents in this complex at least. Um, so I guess how how do we overhear in you know, in High Street, in Egmont? Um, different housing developments, how how do we get the message out to get people involved? And our internet services aren't that well in in housing development. So that's another issue, you know what I mean? Um, which I which I which I've come to realize. Um, but I really, I'm sorry, Ann.
I'm thinking surveys are great for for getting some like fast information in a way if the public, but they're not going to serve the need of really hearing from people.
From folk.
Getting their voices, getting them involved. And I think that the work really needs to be based in the community that you know, we've been dealing with COVID now for almost a year. Um, but maybe things are beginning to change and hopefully we'll be able to do more types of community outreach, have focus groups, how really work to engage people um and bring their voices in, not so much in a survey way, but
Like a forum, a hearing, a forum forum. So so no, no, I'm sorry. Last thing, Alex. Uh, so I so in in this in our complex, we're gonna start something new where we're gonna have public forums. So we're gonna do a Zoom. Um, like a a a quick Zoom class first for everyone in this complex um in the next few weeks, actually. Couple of weeks coming up and then have a forum, a public forum for the Brookline Village Way residents on like concerns and what's going on, you know, over here. I want to add this task force information to that forum. I have someone from this task force be able to speak at this forum. Um, and um, so you know, moving forward in the next few weeks, um this this is what we are looking forward to over here in this complex. I I'll be quiet now. Alex, it's your turn.
No, no, no need to be quiet. I I wanted to add on a bit to to what Ann had to say uh in terms of sort of what you can bring back to the folks in your perfect complex. So um, one thing I I might suggest is really publicizing the ability to come and speak at these meetings, right? So we would be happy to come and speak um when you have your uh your public forums over the next few few weeks. And if that's something that you'd like, um, please reach out to us and we'd be delighted to do that. One other thing that you might do is spread the word about our public hearings uh for this task force. So there's going to be a public hearing on, I think, February seventeenth at seven PM. That's going to be for the full task force for all of our recommendations. And we would love to hear people's thoughts there in addition to sending an uh an email with their written public comments to Devon, Devon, if they can't make it or prefer not to. Um, another thing to think about is if there are folks who want to share their stories and do so anonymously. I know that the Subcommittee on uh Engage Public Engagement has been working on a a forum to get that done. So I think Bonnie Bastian, who's I I know is in the attendees here, could be a good person to reach out to about that or somebody else uh through that Subcommittee. One last thing to think about in terms of internet access, which I know is a huge issue um in for folks in in public housing. I I don't know whether this is something that y'all have already tried and hasn't worked. Um, I know that uh the Brookline Public Library has been lending out some internet hotspots and I wonder if that could be a useful resource for uh for your public forum.
It it definitely could be. Um, and they're probably gonna have to address the internet situation before, you know what I mean?
Listen, in addition to the disaster, which is that it hasn't already been completely fixed.
Yes.
As a stopgap measure.
I know, I appreciate that. But so on the seventeenth is that um so that's public, open to the public's conversation. Devin, can you do me a favor and put that in the um chat as the link so I can save it and then put it in where I need to put it, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem. Encourage um folks, tell them, a lot of it, this is word of mouth, you know? People sharing with their neighbors and their friends, their family members that we are knee deep in in this work and really trying to put something together and we need compete, community.
Input.
Need input, we need more than input. We want as input as people are willing to give, we would love to have people join us in this effort because voices matter so much. And anything that people tell us in an email or by a phone call, um, we are absolutely, we can keep all identifying information confidential. We'll we'll make sure that no identifying information is used, you know, is seen publicly. Um, we just want to hear from people.
Okay, okay. And I know, you know, you know, fear i- 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 it has been a problem in town, but uh for a while with folks speaking up, you know, I I lived there forty one years. Um, but I I I I I'm hopeful and I it's reassuring that folks aren't scared anymore. You know, there's a lot of folks speaking up now and um, so I'm I'm gonna do my best on my part to get the message out and um just let folks know not to be scared. Uh, it's only way things will change if we say what's what's bothering us. And so I I really appreciate all the hard work. Um, your whole commit, your whole task force is doing. Um, and you know, I've been I've been paying attention to you guys more so than the other committee for some reason. I don't know, you guys are easier to follow for some reason, but um and it's less bickering back and forth on on your committee. Um, so I I I appreciate all the hard work you guys do and um so uh thank you. And I and like I said, I would try my best to do my part over here on getting the message out. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Eliana. Eliana, you've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable. Your time will begin.
Um, hi, my name is Eliana. Um, I grew up in Brookline and um went to Brookline Public Schools. I in terms of talking about experience with mental health crises and experience with community in Brookline, um I wanted to talk on that. So I don't have any experience interacting with the police in terms of mental health crisis, but I do have experience being in the Brookline Public School System, particularly at Brookline High School. And I think it's important to note that Brookline High School is already really ahead of the curve in terms of addressing um acute mental health. Um, and in terms of meeting students who are experiencing um acute mental health issues, um, meeting them where they're at. And so in my experience, um, I had severe depression and anxiety that led to me missing a huge amount of school and going to school but not going to class. Um, and and having anxiety attacks at school. And so I was a part of the Bright program. For people who don't know what that is, it's a program um at Brookline High School that's run by the Brookline Center um by social workers. And it's a program where students who have missed a lot of school, um, they can reintegrate back into the school. Um, and instead of throwing students back into the general school population and saying, catch up on your work, you're on your own. You have social workers who are working with students and a tutor who is a go-between between the teachers and the students to help these students um uh healthily and successfully enter back into school. And my experience, um, I officially entered Bright my sophomore year. Um, and I, even when I wasn't an official part of Bright, I continued to spend time in their classroom at Brookline High School. Um, and they are the reason that I graduated high school because I had these social workers who were advocates for me in the public schools and who were able to advocate for me when I was missing ridiculous amounts of class, when I was struggling to get my schoolwork done. And I had these mental health professionals who were meeting me where I was at. And so I think it's important to bring this up because Brookline really is doing something right with the Bright program and um it's really unique. And I know that schools across the country have programs that are based on that program. And when I was in high school, I spoke on a panel um at a symposium for schools who were learning um how to develop similar programs. And the fact that we can do that for our high school students is incredible, but why does that community support stop at age eighteen? Stop when you graduate from the schools? Why do we not continue that support for everybody in the town? Um, I think that's something that's important to look at, that we're doing that and it's successful and the evidence is there in how well students like me are able to then go on from Brookline and go to college and go, you know, live their lives. Um, and we're doing that. Why can't we expand it? Why can't we meet everybody where they're at in a way that understands them and um is beneficial and um is about support?
The next person signed up for public comment is Carolina San Miguel. You've been promoted to a panelist and your time will begin when you're ready.
Hi, Devon. Thanks. I was actually writing here to for you to give the priority to the other residents. So ju- I'm just gonna be quick. It's just for whoever is out there, if you need a resource, especially um what was I wrote down here? Uh, Donell and uh Gaudav. Sorry if I'm not pronouncing properly. And I'm I'm in the Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Department. I'm the new Community Engagement Strategist and really my job will be to reach out to people and this is the challenge we are facing. How do we get to the housing community? How do we get to the voices we need to talk to? So I'm really glad that you guys are here and I would love to interact more. And if I can join the Zoom meeting there, I would love to do that. That's exactly what we want to do. So I'm uh feel free to contact me if you need my email. You can ask the the team that here, they have. Uh, and I'm I'm glad to help. So yeah, thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Nathan Partling. You've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable. Your time will begin.
Hello, this is Nathan. Uh, I am a resident of Brookline. I've been a resident for several years. Uh, I support the recommendations of the report, especially creating a new service inspired by cahoots or other similar groups that responds to these types of crises and removing that responsibility from the police. And I believe it would be best if funding for the police force could be reduced and that funding redirected to this service instead. And I think the Select Board and Town Meeting members should follow the clear majority of Brookline residents and institute this Subcommittee's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Funding is the next hurdle. Or one of the next hurdles. Um, we need to think about funding and funding resources and how how to make this work. So we could use some help brainstorming ideas around that as well if people are interested in helping us.
At this time, there are twenty two attendees and it is a little past seven, but I know the Subcommittee would like to make space for anyone who'd like to offer public comment. So we will give a couple of minutes for any of the twenty one attendees to use the hand raises or Q and A feature to make a comment uh before we close the public hearing.
I know what to add real quickly just so that we can get it on the recording because I know that uh things put into the chat don't make it to the video recording. So for anybody uh who was watching this later, uh we was talking about the email that folks can reach out to in order to submit their stories confidentially. That's reimaginepolicingbrookline@gmail.com.
And Raul Fernandez sent his regrets. Um, he's teaching a class right now, so he couldn't be here um to be part of this public comment period, but he will be watching the recording as soon as his class ends. So maybe we'll let him have dinner first. Last chance, anybody who hasn't spoken would like to 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 speak for a moment, um please.
Have a sign up.
Great.
Eva, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can share your video and unmute and your time will begin.
Hi, my name is Eva. Um, I use she/her pronouns and I grew up in Brookline and currently live here. And I don't have anything new to say. I just want to reiterate the support I have for this committee um and the amazing work you've been doing and want to be another person in the community who voices that support. Um, and also that when I was younger, I was always really scared to call the police or ask for help when there were mental health crises, um because I was scared of cops coming to my house. And um I really wish this was in place so that um that didn't have to happen. This was not only in Brookline. There have been play, you know, scenarios throughout my life where I've been just too scared to call for loved ones. Um, and I hope that this is implemented so that, you know, I won't be scared in the future and other people won't be scared to the same extent, um because there won't be people who um are carrying weapons and are generally considered, you know, are like I I grew up feeling scared of and I'm a white person. Um, and there are many for people of color has exacerbated that fear. Um, so I think that this is one step, one good step in the right direction. Um, so just wanted to say that.
And someone's quest ended. I see Raul has joined us. Hey, Raul. So we're just wrapping up. Oh, Bonnie also.
Um, I was just gonna make a really quick comment on the fact that right now, so my name is Bonnie Bastian, pronouns are she and her. Um, I'm also on the task force and I want to make sure everybody knows that right now is the time to advocate for I'm also on the task force and I want to make sure everybody knows that right now is the time to advocate for this work. Budget season has begun. There are going to be budget hearings happening. The more people show up, the more power that we can have together to push for a public, public safety plan that is life-affirming and not, you know, punishment that is getting to the root cause of all of these problems rather than cracking down on the, the symptoms of them. So I just make sure you keep an eye out for the calendar on the town website. You can also email me directly at bonnybastian@gmail.com or use our reimaginepolicingbrookline@gmail.com either way. Or I'm sure any, any one of us could help you out. But we really, really need your voice and your presence to make this work happen. Thank you.
At this time, there are 21 attendees and no one is using the Q and A or hand raise feature to indicate that they'd like to make a comment. I will defer to the Subcommittee members if they'd like to close the public hearing and offer any final wrap-up remarks.
Thank you all for coming and it's been really helpful to hear everybody's ideas and comments. And we hope to continue to have these conversations as we move on. This is just the first conversation of hopefully many, many. And we really appreciate you being here tonight. Please email us through the reimaginepolicing@gmail.com email if you have any questions for any of us. If you'd like to be involved in some way, we'd, we'd be more than happy to, to have more support. And please tell folks in your community about the work we're doing. So the word gets out. And just thank you for being here. It's been a, a great public hearing. Raul, would you like to say anything? I know you.
Sure. You know, thanks, Ann. I'll just say two things. One, I want to thank these folks and I'm going to do that in a second. I just want to make sure everybody knows about what's coming next. You know, by the way, Raul Fernandez, Select Board Member, Chair of the Task Force. This is one of our Subcommittee's. And they've been doing absolutely phenomenal work. I'm sorry I didn't get to hear all the comments, but I look forward to hearing the report afterwards. I was just teaching and now just finished class and here I am. The, the next steps tomorrow, tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, if you want to join us, eight to 10 every Friday. Since August 28th, we've been meeting. You're welcome to join us tomorrow morning. I think it's going to be a really important meeting because we're going to be talking about, you know, these public hearings and what we've learned from them and what we want to incorporate into the Subcommittee reports, which are going to be finalized next week. We're also going to be talking about, and I know, I'm sure you talked about today, the need for, for something big that actually transforms the kinds of supports that we provide to folks in our community, especially those folks who need it most. So we're going to be talking about the development of a new social, I'm sorry, social service agency within Brookline. I'll be leading that conversation, but, but these folks right here, in particular in this Subcommittee, are going to have a ton to say about that because, you know, they've been really driving, you know, our recommendations about, about how we, how we spend more of our time, our energy, our, our dollars. And, you know, on those folks who need it most. And so we're going to be talking about that a lot tomorrow. After that, the next big date is going to be Wednesday, February 17th at 7:00 PM. That is our task force public hearing. So that's going to be all of it. A nice presentation with some slides for you. It's going to be amazing, right? So we're going to do that, but we want to hear from you and we really, really, really need you there to share your thoughts and views, whatever they are, be there. And then finally, the, what we expect to be our final presentation, we'll see what happens, is going to be, we expect it to be March 2nd, Tuesday, March 2nd, at the Select Board meeting. I don't know what time yet because it's got to get scheduled, but, but it should be at that meeting. And again, we're going to need you right back there to share your thoughts. As Ann mentioned, there's ways you can email them in as well. Devon's happy to take them at dfields@brooklinema.gov to send us your thoughts. We'll incorporate that all as part of the report. The last thing I will say is these people right here, they are, they are Brookline residents, like, like most of us on the, on, on this call right here, who have volunteered, who have stepped up to do this work, which has been thoughtful work. It's been measured. And if you, if you've been to the meetings before, you saw them wrestling with, with with difficult decisions. And it is on the pages of their report. You see the work that they've done and, and exactly what it looks like for all to see, right? And so I just want to thank them with all my heart. And I'll make sure to do that every opportunity that I get because, because these folks stepped up in a very difficult time when tensions were very high in our community and in the world and committed to a process that required countless hours and emotional energy to be able to, well, will soon complete. And so I just want to say thank you to them and thank you to you, especially those names who I continue to see over and over again at these hearings and elsewhere for your continued engagement around this. It's, it's one of the most important issues that we've been, that we've been wrestling with as, as a community for some time. And I'm really excited that this, this task force and this Subcommittee in particular have put so forward some really meaningful recommendations that I think can make a difference in people's lives. So just want to say thanks, thanks to all the members of the Subcommittee, but also all of you for being part of this. Appreciate you.
All right. With that, I think we can probably wrap up unless the Subcommittee members have any final comments. And just as a quick reminder, folks can find all of the hearing information that we talked about on the town calendar at BrooklineMA.gov. The first of which is not a public hearing, but it will be an excellent presentation, like Dr. Fernandez said, is tomorrow at 8:00 AM. The next is Wednesday, February 17th at 7:00 PM. And then the full presentation to the Select Board is Tuesday, March 2nd, which will be likely after 6:00 PM. And we look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Be in touch.